All right, so I had you talk about recipes. So as we begin today, I want you to think about some things with me, especially in the Book of Revelation. So just as a review, these churches, there's seven churches in the Book of Revelation, and a lot of ways, these kind of form a recipe, if you will. How do churches and Christians, because these are, if you remember back all the way to the very beginning, when we were in Ephesus, all of these sins that are being committed, they can be committed only by Christians. You can't abandon your first love if you haven't had your first love at the beginning with, right? You can't be afraid of suffering for the name of Jesus unless you're a Christian. And so a lot of ways, these seven churches form a bit of a recipe. And so let's take a look at what this recipe is. So in Ephesus, how do Christians and really churches fall? Well, the first thing that they do is they leave their first love. So that's number one. Number two is now you go into Smyrna, and Smyrna is afraid of suffering on account of Jesus. Then Pergamum, they hold to the teachings of Balaam and the Nicolaitans. So this is again sexual immorality, idolatry, and so forth. Then you go into Thyatira, which we were at last week, and they tolerate Jezebel, which is also teaching the same thing that Balaam is teaching and in the Nicolaitans in terms of worship and then also sexual immorality. Today, we're going to be in Sardis, and they have a reputation of being alive, but you're dead. Then next week, we'll be in Philadelphia. That is not taking advantage of open doors and opportunities to serve your community that you're placed into. And then, of course, Laodicea is you are lukewarm. So if you kind of would think about the recipe for churches and Christians to really depart from the faith, to no longer be effective to what Christ has called you to. In a way, you would think about, well, here would be the recipe. You'd add a little bit of this and add a little bit of that. And sometimes, you know, not every church has every single one of these things, but they're all having some of them, okay? So a little bit about Sardis. So Sardis, at one point in time, was the capital of this entire region known as Lydia. So we talked about in Thyatira, they were famous for their textiles. Likely Lydia in Acts, chapter 16, she came from this, so she's named after this region. So back in the day, Sardis was the capital city of this region. But Sardis, at the time of Paul, at the time of Revelation, wasn't as famous or well-known as some places like Ephesus, let's say. So it was more inland, but it did have a couple of things that it was very well-known for. Number one is it had a large temple to Artemis. So it was not even close to the temple that was in Ephesus, but a lot of people would come to Sardis to worship Artemis. It also had, in this region, had the largest synagogue of any city. And this synagogue was actually attached to the Roman gymnasium. And so it was, just imagine all of this kind of idol worship and all of these pagan things that are happening, and attached to it is a Jewish synagogue, right? So a couple of other things that happened in Sardis. Archaeologists have found in some of the shops. So we've talked about the Agora, that's the kind of the marketplace. So archaeologists believe that the place where they found this was a paint shop. So there's like a mill that you would grind. And so the owner of the paint shop apparently was a follower of Jesus Christ. Now, what they, this inscription that you see here on the left, it's really a prayer to actually pray that God blesses the water supply. So it's like a well, the crosses are on a well. So we don't know this for certain, but as you kind of dive into the city and what's happening in Sardis, you kind of get this feeling, again, I'm just talking here, but just trying to imagine what it would have been like, that likely this person who owned this shop and put the cross on there was probably more in terms of, you know, I'm just gonna put this cross on here. Yeah, I follow Jesus, but I'm part of the Agora. You know, what's really important to me is be part of the enterprise and the business, right? Versus not really just following Jesus. So it's kind of like, think about it like today, you see people that wear crosses all the time, right? That's kind of what's going on here, I would say, is that this person is not necessarily saying, you know, Jesus is Lord necessarily. It's more so saying, hey, you know, I got my stuff, you got your stuff, and I'm just gonna kind of slap a cross on here so that hopefully my God will bless my business. It's kind of, kind of like that. And we're gonna see more of that kind of in Sardis. So open your Bibles to, this is in chapter three, beginning in verse one. And so we're gonna dive into Sardis. Revelation, chapter three, verse one. "And to the angel of the church in Sardis write the words of him who has the seven spirits of God and the seven stars." So again, we just wanna go back and say, what is Jesus saying here? So turn back to Revelation, chapter one. This is verse 20. So remember, Jesus appears to John. He appears to him as this priestly king. And so John falls down, dead as a doornail. And then Jesus reaches down and in his mercy lifts him up. And then he's the one that is holding the seven lampstands and the seven stars. So in verse 20, tells us a little bit about what's actually happening in this vision. Verse 20, "As for the mystery of the seven stars that you saw in my right hand and the seven golden lampstands, the seven stars are the angels of the seven churches, and the seven lampstands are the seven churches." So when he talks about the seven stars, he's talking about the angels. He's talking about these angels who kind of have a responsibility for these churches. And so he is having authority over these angels. But when it also says the seven spirits of God. We talked about this earlier, that this seven, these lampstands really represent the seven-fold presence of God in the church. So we talked about that many weeks ago, but this idea of the seven spirits, it's this full presence of God. So think about the fact that Jesus is walking in and amongst the lampstands. That's the image that we get. And Jesus is coming and he's in, he's walking around the churches. So then what happens in each one of these letters is he says something like this. He says, "I know who you are. I've seen you, I've watched you, and I see." And so he'll say something like, you know, here's what I know about you. And so the people of that city would say, oh, he really does know us. He knows exactly what's going on. And so this is what's happening. So Jesus says, back in Revelation, chapter three, verse one, he says, "I know your works. You have the reputation of being alive, but you are dead." So this idea of being alive but dead is really where we want to spend some time this morning. And the word that comes to my mind here is this word, reputation. And I want you to think about that just a little bit here. So think about it this way. In our day and age, we have a church nearly on every street corner, right? Not so in the ancient world, right? So if you were in Sardis, there's probably one church. And there's one church in Thyatira, and there's one church in Ephesus, and so on, right? But the church in Sardis has this reputation of being alive, but they're actually dead. So think of yourself as a member of the church in Thyatira. What would you be saying about the church in Sardis? Maybe you would be saying, you know, we're poor. We don't have what they have over in Sardis. Boy, why can't we be like the church in Sardis? See that? And then all around that region, you have this reputation of, oh, man, the church in Sardis, they are, they're really great. But what's happening is we have this kind of way of looking at the church or looking at churches and thinking, they're great, good things are happening there. And Jesus comes along and says, you've got this reputation, but you know what? Actually, you're dead. So back at the beginning of these letters, I mentioned to you, I asked you the question, what do you, how do you think that the churches responded? Do you think that they responded in a way that said, yeah, we know? I think that these churches were absolutely shocked to hear what Jesus said. I think that they probably thought to themselves, we're alive, we're great, everybody knows it, and then Jesus comes along and says, you're dead. Did you have a comment? Yes, yes, you're gonna have, and there are, and so later on in the verses, it's gonna say, there's a few people, right, that names left in Sardis, right? And yeah, probably those are the people that say, I've been telling you people for years that you won't listen, so probably, probably true, all right? So I want you to think about just this idea of reputation. And it brought to my mind a book that I've read by a gentleman named Eugene Peterson. Anybody know the name Eugene Peterson? What's he famous for? The Message. So if you have the Bible Message version, he is the one who translated The Message. And so he writes, he wrote four books. This one is called Under the Unpredictable Plant. So it is a, it's a story. He's using the story of Jonah as a way to think about ministry. And so he's talking about how Jonah, he wants to go to Tarshish. He doesn't want to go to Nineveh, you know, thinking about him being a pastor. Like, nobody wants to go to Nineveh. That's a terrible place to go. I want to go to Tarshish because that's the posh place. That's the place with the great reputation, and on and on and on. And Eugene Peterson's saying, number one, that's a lie, they don't exist. Tarshish has its problems, just like Nineveh has its problems. And so he talks about that. But then he, Eugene Peterson has this phrase that he coined, and the phrase is this. He calls it ecclesiastical pornography. So what is ecclesiastical pornography? It goes like this. You know, we're at Prince of Peace, and our egg hunt isn't anything like Prestonwood's Egg Hunt. They drop Easter eggs out of a helicopter. Why don't we drop Easter eggs out of a helicopter? You follow me? You know, pastor, I went to Prestonwood, and they have Santa Claus flying on a sleigh and live camels. Why can't we do stuff like that? Have you ever gone on vacation? And you went to a church, and you saw some really great things that were happening? And then you come back and you come to Prince of Peace, and you're like, why can't we do stuff like that? You ever thought that before? I better hear some, see some heads going like this, because I've heard from some of you. And what happens is, that happens all the time. And what Eugene Peterson calls that is he calls it ecclesiastical pornography. And now he's really taking pastors to task, because pastors are probably the worst at it. You know, oh, I only, my congregation that I'm serving, they only have honored people in worship. Must be nice to be where you're at, right? Or on and on and on, and pastors do it all the time, and we have to repent of it all the time. So I want you to, I'll just read an excerpt of what he says. He says, "Nothing in Israel strikes me as terrifically attractive. If I had been church shopping in the seventh century B.C., I think that Egyptian temples and Babylonian ziggurats or the lovely groves dedicated to Asherah on the green hills of Samaria would have been far more attractive. If I had been religion shopping in the first century A.D., I'm sure that either the purity of the synagogue or the intriguing rumors surrounding the Greek mystery religions or Hellenistic humanism with just a touch of myth in the background would have offered far more to my consumer soul. A bear sixty or seventy years after Pentecost, we had an account of seven churches that shows about the same quality of holiness and depth of virtue found in any ordinary parish in America today." You think he's right? I think he's right. "In two thousand years of practice, we haven't gotten any better. You would think that we would have, but we haven't. Every time we open up a church door and take a careful scrutinizing look inside, we find them there again, sinners. And I promise you, you will find them, because your pastor is one of them." It's true. "But you'll also find Christ, Christ in the preaching, Christ in the sacraments, but inconveniently and embarrassingly mixed into this congregation of sinners. It is to be expected in these situations that with some frequency, certain persons will come forward with designs to improve matters. They want to purify the church. They propose to make the church something that will advertise to the world the attractiveness of the kingdom. With few exceptions, these people are or soon become heretics, taking on only as much of the gospel as they can manage and apply to the people around them, attempting to construct a version of the church that is so well behaved and efficiently organized that there will be no need for God." It's hard. Says, "They abhor the scandal of both the cross and the church. They will have nothing to do with the congregation in Nineveh. They are going to sail to Tarshish and start fresh, clean, and gloriously. But it is the very nature of pastoral work and ministry to embrace this scandal, accept this humiliation, and daily work in it, not despising the shame or denying it either. Listening to many pastors talk to other pastors when they are away from their parishes, you would think none of this was true. Every conversation features wonderfully glowing stories about successful programs and slick conversations. I used to hear such stories or read such books and be impressed. After some years of careful Bible reading and congregation watching, I am no longer impressed. I think it far more likely that these pastors, insofar as they are telling the truth, are presiding over some form of Greek mystery religion or Baal shrine or Babylonian religious parade." Ouch! And his whole point is this idea, I want you to think about Sardis, the church in Sardis is having this reputation. And they were doing what? They were resting on their laurels. So there's a story that the people of Sardis would have known about. So in the sixth century B.C., Sardis was a flourishing city. Their king, his name was Crassus, he was famous for his wealth. He was famous for the might of his army. And so what happened is Cyrus, remember Cyrus, the king of the Persians, comes along, and he's the one that exiled Jerusalem and the Jews into Babylon, okay? Or I'm sorry, comes in to defeat the Babylonians and then sends them all back, okay? So what happens is, in about 550 B.C., he comes and he attacks Sardis. But everybody's like, we're good, our walls are high, we're fine. And then one night, a couple of soldiers come in and sneak into Sardis, and nobody is, they're just totally asleep, and they open up the gates, and Cyrus's army comes in, not a shot fired, and they conquer the city. So this is, this idea of being asleep or sneaking in and having a thief come in, they would have known something about that, okay? So back to Revelation, chapter three. So Jesus says, "I know your works. You have the reputation of being alive, but you are dead." So I wonder, thinking about a recipe. So we're thinking about all of these seven churches in Revelation, chapters two and three. What do you think would be the recipe for a dead church? What do you think? Complacency? What else? Yes? So I'm gonna say it this way, David, say if I'm saying you're, you know, what is the saying? It goes something like, you know, if you want to kill something, organize it? Is that kind of what you're saying? So he's talking about like systems, right? And are systems bad? Do you need to have clarity? Yeah, you do. But sometimes, we think to ourselves, we're just gonna, we're gonna systematize it, or we're gonna organize it. And what happens is we unconsciously say, now we don't need the Holy Spirit to guide us, right? That's what, that's what I hear you saying, okay? Anything else? Yeah. Arrogance and superiority, say more about that. What do you mean by that? Yeah, so I think you're right, Nancy. She's saying arrogance and superiority, meaning, you know, we've got it all figured out, right? We don't need the, we don't need the Holy Spirit, we don't need, and I think a lot, I think that that's probably where Sardis is at, honestly. Is there, we're good, we're good. Yeah, Rosie? Really important. So there's a Bible verse about that, Rosie. So what she's saying is, you don't just take the pastor's word for it, okay? Go to the Scriptures. So this is in, and you're saying that Paul's saying that. So this is in Acts, chapter 17. So this is the, this is the people in Berea, right? And it's, this is Acts, chapter 17, verse 10. "The brothers immediately sent Paul and Silas away by night to Berea, and when they arrived, they went into the Jewish synagogue. Now these Jews were more noble than those in Thessalonica." Why? Because they received the word with eagerness, examining the Scriptures to see if these things were so. So Paul, yeah, I know you've got your certificate of apostleship. I know you got it framed on your wall, but what you have to say doesn't matter. What matters is what does the Scripture say? That's super important. And so, so what I would say, in addition to what Rosie is saying, is that a dead church gets away from the word of God. Okay, anything else? Anything else you'd say? Yeah, Shannon? Lack of prayer, really important. Yes, Walt? Yeah, yeah, so we're just, we kind of are more inward, and we're not actually out in the community. Is that what you would say? Yeah. Complacency? Yeah, we're kind of, we're just good, you know, we've kind of made it, right? We talked a little bit about the life cycle of a church last week, and you get to this point where you're trying to, you're just trying to survive. And then when you do survive, you're like, we're good now, rest easy, no big deal, yeah. Rosie is saying this does not apply to Prince of Peace, but somebody, some people might disagree, but go ahead. Yeah, you have churches where you have this cult of personality, right? And they, it's super toxic, and it's not, it's not God pleasing at all, okay? I'm glad for that, but, but what happens is throughout that time, we have to be, I have to be humble and humbled. And I like being humble, I don't like being humbled, if that makes sense. And so what happens is, whether you hear it from Eugene Peterson, which this is not the voice of the Holy Spirit, but Revelation, chapter three, is the voice of God to you. And so this is why we're thinking about these things, is because these are not just these seven churches. These are representative of all churches across time. So I want you to think about these dead churches. So about 10 years ago, a guy named Tom Rainier, he wrote a book, really small, just the kind of books I love, and it's called An Autopsy of a Deceased Church. So he's looking at churches, and he is looking at all of these different places, and he's kind of saying, what are the, what are the common denominators of these deceased churches? What happens to them? How did they get to that point? And so he came up with a list. Again, I want you to think recipe, okay? So for those of you that are thinking, how does a cookie recipe have anything to do with Revelation? This is, this is how it works, right? So this is what you do. So the recipe of a dead church. Number one, the church refused to look like the community. There are scattered all across the country churches who refuse to look like the community. They refuse to kind of think about themselves outside of their walls. I remember in Lincoln, Nebraska, I was talking to my grandma. For those of you that know me, know my grandma Miller is a very, very important person to me. She probably top three women in my life, and in fact, my table in my office is her table. And she, I remember the community in the neighborhood that my family grew up in, in Lincoln, Nebraska, was Hispanic. And I said to my grandma one day, a faithful member of that congregation forever, and I said, hey, so grandma, what are you guys doing to reach that community? And she says, well, they're welcome to worship with us. What happens if they don't speak the language? Well, they can learn the language. You see what I mean? So guess where that congregation is now? They don't exist anymore. Happens all the time, okay? So here's the recipe. Church that refused to look like the community. Number two, the budget moved inwardly. Is we think about how do we spend it on ourselves? How do we deploy resources for our own benefit? Number three, and this was one that just, it hits, it should hit home for every congregation, is that the Great Commission, go and make disciples of all nations. The Great Commission becomes the Great Omission. You just don't do it anymore. You don't, the mission of Christ is kind of put on the backburner. Number four is you have the preference-driven church. So you have all of these just different preferences, and we're not asking the question, where is Jesus at, and how is he speaking to us, and where is he leading us? What we do is, it's just this preference. What we do is it's just this preference, and we got lots of preferences, right? So pastoral tenure decreases. Now, I think that, uh, um, Prince of Peace has been very fortunate, uh, in that regard. For those of you that don't know this, Pastor Dan, when he came, uh, to Prince of Peace, what, six, seven years ago, uh, he came from a congregation in Cisco, Texas. In 30 years, in 30 years, this congregation in Cisco, Texas, has had 16 pastors, sole pastors. So you think about that, average of, just, just shy of two years, right? That's a problem. Okay? So that's, that's what, uh, that's what he's talking about. Uh, the church, church rarely, Shannon, prayed together. So super important, uh, that, that we're in, in community together, whether you are coming on Saturday morning with Pastor Sabre, uh, or in your small groups and you're praying for each other, or just as a congregation, and we just pray together and for each other. So those, those relationships, um, just kind of took a backseat. The church had no clear purpose. So sometimes what happens is, again, in the life cycle of the church, what happens is our purpose is just survival, right? That's what we want to do, we just kind of want to keep going, keep going, and keep going. Well, um, that's not really the purpose that Jesus Christ has given to us. And then the last one is the church, uh, obsessed over the facilities. And every time I say something about facilities, I kind of feel bad because, um, I, I, it sounds like what I'm saying is, facilities aren't important. Are facilities important? You bet. Um, thanks be to God that we didn't have a torrential downpour rain, or you Dustin would be sitting in water right now. Now, we could say, ah, that's all right, don't worry about the facilities, Dustin, right? Uh, focus on Jesus. Right? Go, or go to a dry seat, right? Um, or, you know, the elevator, or, uh, or an HVAC system, or bathrooms that, uh, that are pink, or whatever it is, right? Um, facility, I don't want to say that facilities aren't important, but, but is it easy to get to a place where we just think that that's all that it's about? It is very easy to get to that point. And I, and I always say that, um, a church operates more like the Miller family than IBM. So back to your comment, David, about systems and all of these things, right? Um, we sometimes think that, that the church just has to function like, uh, like a corporation, like it functions best like a business, right? And there are business elements, but it functions more similarly to the Miller family. Does the Miller family have a budget? Yes. Does the Miller family have a property to take care of? Yes. But nobody would ever come over to the Miller household and say, oh, you just, you guys just care about your facilities, that's all you care about. They would never say that. But do we believe it's important to take care of what God has given to us? Absolutely. If I invited you over and you came in the front door and I had my dirty laundry, uh, just strewn over the floor, what would that tell you? That you, you're not welcome in my home, right? So yeah, yeah, Terry, it's laundry day, thanks for coming. So, so the point is, the point is, is that, uh, congregations that are just so focused on their facilities, so many of these things in and of themselves, uh, like, um, the budget moved inwardly, sometimes we, is it, is it wrong to, uh, to do discipleship within the community? Sometimes churches do that, but then they forget, oh, our call is to be, uh, uh, for the sake of others. Um, is, are preferences in the church, are they ba, are they necessarily bad? No. Um, so I, I just, I, the point is, is again, just like facilities, they're not bad things in and of themselves, but when they do take us away from the mission that God has called us to, to go and make disciples of all nations, baptizing them, them in the name of the Father, Son, the Holy Spirit, and teaching them to observe all I've commanded you, right? When we fail to do that and we focus on these other things, it's time for us to hear again the voice of, of the Holy Spirit to say, that's not what it's about, right? Doesn't mean that these things aren't important, and they are important, but don't let them, uh, become the mission, okay? Questions on that? Does that make sense? Yes? Yeah, Sherry, and then Glenn? That's a good question. So yes, I mean, your, your point is right, that, that, uh, that if you have a recipe, it's not, uh, chocolate chip cookies if you leave out the flour, that's disgusting, right? Um, so it's a little, I would say it's not necessarily a recipe, but it's a little bit of this, it's a little bit of that, it's things that we need to be constantly thinking about, uh, you know, do we have, uh, a healthy amount of this or that? Or if we have even a slight amount of, uh, of something that just should not belong? Uh, how do we repent of that and move forward? So Glenn? So for those of you that are either online, or those of you who are there that, that didn't hear that, uh, Glenn was saying that, uh, he went to a meeting of the Texas District Lutheran Church Missouri Senate, and a number of congregations throughout Texas went around the room and, and said, what is the top priority of your congregation? And of all those congregations, the congregation that you were part of at that time, uh, was the only one that didn't say that our facilities was our number one priority. Um, Jesus has a, a, a word for you, uh, if, or a word for us, if we get to that point. And the word is woe. Okay, yes? Yeah? Yep? Yes. Right? Mm-hmm? Yep? Right? Yeah, so it's really important, um, I'm gonna have a hard time summarizing what you were saying, Nancy, but, um, the, yes, there are people around this community that what they're looking for is they're looking for something that looks nice, right? Uh, um, you, you know, you got, in your fellowship hall, you got garage doors? What? No, thank you. Uh, so, um, somebody said to me one time, years ago, I've never forgotten it, and, and again, I'm, I'm just, I'm just sharing some of these things with you, not because I have all the answers, but because I think it's important that we pray about these things, seek the Lord for, for His direction. Uh, but he said to me that you win people to what you win them with. Does that make sense? In other words, here's what he's saying, is that if you win them with fancy facilities, guess what that means? You better, you're gonna enter into an arms race and you better have a tip-top spit-shine all the time. Cause otherwise, guess what'll happen? When they find another place that's a little bit fancier than yours, they're gone. But if you win them with the gospel, and you feed them with the gospel, and you connect them into the church and relationship, guess what you, that, right? So that's what we want to do. Yes, David? Yeah. Yes. That's super important. So David said that, uh, uh, one of the things that's not in here, right, is they get away from biblical truth, uh, super important, and a lot of churches do that. Yeah, so one more, Chuck? How often do, his, his question is, how often do the chefs go back, uh, to their recipe? That's a really good question, and, um, I think that there is, uh, it's always a challenge because, um, Prince of Peace and every other congregation I've ever been a part of, um, typically has, has their, I don't want to say God, that's not right, um, but typically has a mantra of, we've never done it that way before. And so that's a challenge, always. Um, it's also a challenge of, uh, you know, I can say for, for Prince of Peace, for sure, there's never, um, there's never a shortage of really good ideas. Everybody's got a good idea about all of these different things, right? And, and they're, and are they all, are they wrong? Not necessarily. Uh, but I think that what happens is, and the, the thing that I would say, uh, for our staff and our leadership, is, um, focus is hard. Uh, it's hard to focus on one thing, or two things, or three things, even that, you know, that, that it's hard to focus there. I think that, that congregations like Prince of Peace, especially with our size, tend to be very spread out and you, you get spread thin with all kinds of things. And if I probably had a whiteboard, we could probably fill it up with all kinds of things, and they're not, none of them are bad. But then if we said, okay, what one thing are we gonna focus on? Then that person said, well, my thing, right? That's hard, and that takes time, and that takes prayer, that takes time in the Word. So let's keep, let's keep going, I want to finish this up. Okay, so we're, we're not even ma, we haven't made it even to verse two. So verse two, "Wake up, wake up and strengthen what remains and is about to die, for I have not found your works complete in the sight of my God. Remember then what you received and heard, keep it and repent. If you will not wake up, I will come like a thief." So this is kind of this idea that Sardis would understand, right? "Come like a thief, and you will not know at what hour I will come against you. Yet you have still a few names in Sardis, people who have not soiled their garments, and they will walk with me in white, for they are worthy. So who has made them worthy? Not their own works, but Jesus Christ has made them worthy." So what does it mean to soil your garments? Well, uh, it doesn't specifically say here what they did, but likely it's doing the same works and deeds of, uh, that Jezebel was teaching, it's likely the things that the Nicolaitans were teaching, it's likely the things that, that were taught by, by a person who represents Balaam. And so one of the things that I think is really interesting in the church in Sardis, is that they're one, if not the only, they're one of a few churches who was not facing any kind of persecution or suffering. Isn't that interesting? And, and the question is, is, is it possible that maybe the absence of their having to suffer, uh, contributed to the fact that they're like, ah, we're good, just, it's okay, we don't have to suffer for the name of Jesus, in fact, we really would rather not. How many of you would rather not suffer for the name of Jesus? Yep. Right? However, what happens in these, uh, in these churches where they really have to suffer for the name of Jesus, it does grow their, their faith, strengthens their resolve, okay? Um, verse five, "So the one who conquers will be clothed thus in white garments." We're gonna see the white garments show up multiple times in the rest of the book of Revelation. Um, "And I will never blot his name out of the book of life. I will confess his name before my Father and before his angels. He who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches." So this idea of the book of life, it's gonna come up multiple times within the book of Revelation, it only happens outside the book of Revelation one time, and that's in Philippians, chapter four. Uh, so Paul mentions the book of life, so likely this is kind of a, a rabbinical idea, so the rabbis are talking about, uh, this book of life, and they, and so Paul picks up on it, and again, this, this phrase or this idea of, of a name being written into the book of life, uh, would be very familiar with them, and so this is why, uh, Jesus brings that up. Okay, so I want to just close in this way, and, cause we don't want to just think about recipes for, you know, here's how you go away from, from God, right? And we're here, but there's a recipe that would be, uh, that we would need to know that helps us be stronger as a congregation. So turn in your Bibles to the book of Galatians. All right, Galatians, chapter five. So here is the recipe. So we know what the recipe is for idolatry. So this is verse nine, nineteen, "Now the works of the flesh," Galatians five, verse nineteen, "Now the works of the flesh are evidence, sexual immorality, impurity, sensuality, idolatry, sorcery, enmity, strife, jealousy, fits of anger, rivalries, dissensions, division, envy, drunkenness, orgies, and things like these." So that would be a recipe, if you will. But what's the recipe to, uh, walk in the kingdom of God? Number one, verse twenty-two, "But the fruit of the Spirit is love." What's the next one? Joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control. So what happens is Paul is essentially saying, how do you, how, how is it that you know that you're a follower of Christ? And then James, of course, is the book that kind of says, how do others know that you're a follower of Christ? And so, uh, James talks about the, um, you know, faith without works is dead, right? So this is how people know that the Spirit of Christ is among us, is that we, we exhibit things, the fruits of the Spirit. And is it our fruits? Is it things we work hard for? No, it's what God works in us and through us, and then people experience love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control. So those are, that's the, that's the recipe that we want to ask God to work in us and through us for His kingdom's purpose. All right, let's pray, and, uh, and then next week, uh, we're gonna go to Philadelphia. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you for your word, I thank you for the opportunity to wrestle with it, uh, and really speak to us where we're at as a congregation and as your people. I pray your blessing upon us, uh, may we hear your word, may we heed your word, uh, may we repent of those ways that we have drifted, uh, by our own sinful desires, uh, and Lord, I pray that ultimately you remind us, uh, that you are a God of grace and mercy and forgiveness, uh, that, that though, uh, a kind of people are dead and congregations are dead, that you are the God, uh, who raises the dead. And so, Lord, I pray that you would renew us constantly, daily, weekly, hourly, uh, to be the people that you've called us to be in this community around the world for the sake of your name and for the sake of your kingdom. We pray it in the name of Jesus. Amen. God bless you all, see you next week. See you next week.